Good evening, welcome. I'm Bobby Fitch-Howman. I'm president of the Birdbrook Grange and I welcome you that we can actually meet in person this year. And we're excited about that. And it's also being livestreamed by BCTV. So this is exciting and I'm proud of all of you for getting out here. I hope you'll get home safely tonight, all of us. We live in a wonderful town and this is a great chance for us to share together a very educational program because that's what it is. It's not a business meeting of the town. It is an education meeting hosted by the Grange and with the cooperation of the town because the town covers the expense of BCTV's livestream. So I'm going to turn this over to Rick Zaymore, our moderator. I would ask that people be civil and loving and considerate and that we can have a good discourse and all go away feeling very good about the town and ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Yeah, I'm Rick Zaymore. I'm the moderator. I'm also the guy that shovels the snow here. A couple of other things. Thanks for coming out tonight. It's great to see everybody. It's great to be in person after three years. And yeah, we should have a good meeting. Couple of things. Oh, I'm going to get my glasses on. Thank you. Thank you, sound man. So yeah, this is a Grange and Select Board co-presentation. The Grange is having the Sugar on Snow Saturday, next Saturday. I encourage you all to come. It's a wonderful meal, a wonderful chance to be with people. Seatings at five, six, and seven. Tickets are $15 and you can reserve tickets, which is recommended according to the handout that was on your seat. Let's see. Sugar on Snow got through that, got through that. Okay, format's going to be as follows tonight. First, we're going to hear from the Select Board, who are going to present the articles one at a time. And I would ask you to hold your questions for the Select Board until they've gone through all the articles and then they'll take questions at the end. And after the Select Board, we will hear from any candidates present who want to present themselves to the voters. And they can take, I would ask them to limit their remarks to three to five minutes and then they can take questions if they want. And after the candidates, for Select Board, we have two contested seats this year. We can hear from anyone else in the audience who is a candidate for any office in town. And after that, I think we will hear from Sean Murphy about the Wyndham Southeast Supervisor Union. What's going on there? Oh, oh, sorry. The district, the district. I get them confused. I know you don't. And I think then, and then any announcements, anything else? Any questions before we start? Okay, with that, I will turn it over to the Select Board.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming. First thing we're going to do is read the articles that'll be, will be voting on at town meeting. Article one, to elect moderator for the ensuing year.
I want to be really clear that this is Michael Becker to my right. My name is, my name is Zan Eistis. And article two in the, will be to hear the report of the town auditors.
I'm Veranda Porche and article three is to hear the report of the library trustees, 22 VSA, that's Vermont Statute Annotated, Section 144.
Article four, to elect the following officers: one cemetery commissioner, two library trustees, and one trustee of public funds.
Article five, I will read the article and then I have a few comments to state about the, just context for the article. Shall the town vote to authorize the Select Board to appoint a municipal treasurer as provided in 17 VSA, Section 265, 1F? There have been a large number of financial issues that Guilford has worked to resolve over the past month. Penny is retiring from both the elected clerk and treasurer positions in March of 2023. That's less than a month away. In consideration of her recommendation to the Select Board to appoint a qualified treasurer following her retirement, the Select Board agreed that it's in the best interest to act on her recommendation. Penny's statement in the Gazette read, "The underlying fundamentals and challenges of municipal finances have become increasingly complex. That trend will probably continue. Guilford needs a treasurer with expertise in municipal accounting and finances. To that end, I feel that appointing a qualified treasurer would be the best course of action for Guilford." Best practices have been followed. A job description was created and posted repeatedly. Interviews were conducted. Penny was a major contributor to the process. On February 16th, she appointed the Select Board's preferred candidate, Ellie Mayenin. The Select Board believes that it is important to have a qualified professional in the position of treasurer for a long term, not just elected for three years. Hence, the request to voters to authorize the appointment of a treasurer. If the voters do not agree to appoint a treasurer, then we are grateful to Ellie because she has decided to run for the election, for the election to the position.
Article six, shall the town vote to authorize highway fund expenditures in the amount of $1,041,439 for fiscal year July 1, 2023 to July 30, 2024, for which revenues will be raised through taxes and other sources? That's 17 VSA, Section 2264. And this represents an increase in expenditures and also a decrease in anticipated revenue. And I think we can understand why Danny isn't here tonight to expound on it, but I'm sure he will. Oh, I think we have more detail. Thank you, Sheila. And thank you, Sheila in general. This represents an increase in expenditures of $45,516 to be raised through taxes over FY '23. $15,000 of that increase is directly tied to the cost of diesel, $11,200 to the cost of sand and salt, and there is roughly $12,000 increase in salaries spread over five road crew members. Okay? I can repeat those details later if you want to hear them again.
Article seven, shall the voters authorize general fund expenditures for operating expenses of $659,201, of which $506,731 shall be raised by taxes and $152,470 by non-tax revenues for the fiscal year July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024? 17 VSA, Section 2664. Couple of comments to add to that. This represents an increase in expenditures of $57,328 to be raised through taxes over fiscal year '23. $45,000 of that increase is directly tied to the major increase in anticipated legal fees due to the suit against the Select Board. Of the remaining $12,470 increase over last year, much can be accounted for by inflation. Also, we have projected a decrease in anticipated revenue in both state funds paid to the town, down $5,000, and in interest income, down $2,500.
Article eight, shall the town vote to continue membership in the Wyndham Regional Commission and raise and appropriate the sum of $5,428 to defray the town's share of its expenses? A note, membership in the Wyndham Regional Commission continues to benefit Guilford in many ways. This year, the town received assistance fulfilling its municipal roads grant project responsibilities, creating a roadmap for annual highway obligations to state and regional authorities, mobilizing to help with renewable energy, successfully applying for the renewal of the Guilford Center Village designation, much assistance with the 2022 to '30 Town Plan, mapping, and many other projects and tasks. This week, Guilford participated in a four-part series discussing climate in migration and the potential impacts on communities. WRC is also working to create a cooperative resource sharing plan for our region.
Article nine, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $258,450 for the Guilford Volunteer Fire Department? And I believe when it's discussion time, one of our Guilford Volunteer Fire Department representatives will be available to speak more, with more detail to this.
Article 10, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $35,000 for the Guilford Volunteer Fire Department Capital Sinking Fund? Again, the Guilford Volunteer Fire Department will speak to this article later.
Article 11, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,000 for healthcare and rehabilitation services of southeastern Vermont, HCRS pursuant to 24 VSA, Section 2691? A note, HCRS is in year one of the three, of the three years in which they must successfully repetition voters to participate with other towns in funding their work on behalf of residents. Once this process is completed, HCRS will be added to the list of other human service organizations below. A separate article will not be required.
Article 12, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sound, the sum of $27,393 for the following human service organizations pursuant to 24 VSA, Section 2691? And as you know, this means that these organizations have already petitioned to the town for three years and most of them more and been accepted by the voters. And so I guess I'll read down the list. Youth Services, $1,605. Women's Freedom Center, $1,000. Groundworks Collaborative, $1,000. Visiting Nurse and Hospice for Vermont and New Hampshire, $6,300. Retired Senior Volunteers RSVP, $485. Senior Solutions, $850. Brattleboro Area Hospice, $300. Gathering Place, $500. Brattleboro Senior Meals, $350. Southern Vermont Economic Development Strategies or SEVIDS, $6,363. AIDS Project of Southeastern Vermont, $350. Connecticut River Transit, $250. SEFC, $2,040. And Guilford Cares, $6,000.
Article 13, shall the voters authorize the town treasurer pursuant to 32 VSA, Section 4791, to collect current taxes without discount?
And accompanying that, article 14, shall the town vote that overdue taxes will bear interest at a rate of 1% per month or fraction thereof from the due date of such tax to be charged after October 15 pursuant to 32 VSA, Section 5136.
And finally, article 15, transact any other business that may lawfully come before said meeting.
Can that conclude? Am I on? Are we getting, am I? Thank you, Select Board. That concludes the presentation of the articles. Now we'll take questions. We've got a microphone we're going to need to pass. Oh, Hal's going to be our mic runner. Thank you, Hal. Please speak into the microphone and hold it close to your lips and, because otherwise the people that are on BCTV will not hear you. So who, who would like to ask a question?
I just got one quick question before we even get started. I printed this out the other day and a lot of the articles are all different. They're numbered different.
Okay, wait, wait. Can you wait and speak into the microphone?
I printed the articles out the other day and what we went over today, a lot of it is different. The articles are different, the numbers are different, and there's more articles that were brought up today than are on here. Did I not get the latest? I printed this out last week.
I can't answer that question.
You want a new book? Yeah, if somebody's got one. This is the one that was emailed to us just a couple of days ago.
Was emailed or mailed? Is that far away from the town report?
It was emailed.
Okay, well, the town report should have the correct articles. Excuse me? Page 72, the town report. Should have a 2023 warning. Here comes Linda with a second batch of cookies. First ones didn't work. Okay, question. Graphic.
I just wanted to mention that Michael said there were two library trustee positions. Actually, there's only one library trustee position this year.
In articles six and seven, there are, well, in six it says, revenues will be raised through taxes and other sources. I'm wondering what those other sources are. And also in article seven, it says raised by taxes and non-tax revenues. So both of those, I just wonder whether it is.
I think the simplest answer to that, and I won't be completely right in every case, but the simplest answer is grants that we get to achieve some of the budget. There are other, there are other things as well, but the grants. Sheila can speak.
So if you look in the operating budget for both OO3 and OO9, OO3 is general, OO9 is the highway, you will see that there are a number of revenue sources. Taxes, delinquent taxes, delinquent tax penalty, and insurance credits are just all under taxes. And then there are the revenues that the town receives from Algiers Fire District Number One, licenses and permits, state funds, town clerk fleet fees, miscellaneous grants, if we were to get any, but we're not getting any this year, interest earned. And so that's on the OO3 budget in the, let me just look at, I'm going to get to the OO9 budget. Hold on a minute. So at the beginning of each budget, budgets show revenues by category. And then fiscal year '23 budget, fiscal year '24 budget, and fiscal year '23 actual. The first many lines of the OO3 budget are revenue sources, of which taxes are one such source to the town. On the OO9 highway budget, the same is true. There are a number of different revenues and they're listed in the town report exactly as they were presented. Sheila, could you mention the page number? If you hold on a minute, I can. Okay, so the general fund revenues OO3 starts on page nine of the report and continues to page 13. And that's through the expenses. Sorry, it's going. Page 15. And then the highway fund revenues and expenses begin on page 16.
Other questions?
I have a question. This year's town report on, what page is it? Page nine. We normally have town funds listed under state funds and they're not listed this year. I was wondering if you could clarify how much money we have in our general reserve fund and our surplus reserve, I think it's called surplus reserve fund?
So when we went through the budget workshops, we went through, in the revenues, we have a line, town funds. And I think during the budget workshops and in some Select Board meetings, we have explained that town funds was a one-time draw to create, to reduce the amount of taxes. So we took from transfer in to, transfer out, say, for the Green River, not for the Green River coverage, for the capital fund. Instead of putting $225,000 into the capital fund, we used 125 as revenue in, it's some counting thing that was done one time only. And it showed transfer funds out in expenses and transfer funds in in revenues. They were not equal because it's not very many of those. Only about 250,000 of the transfer out funds that are raised through taxes were used to reduce taxes in 2020, I think it was. I don't remember. It was during a COVID year. So that was a one-time accounting movement. I don't know how to explain it in accounting terms. If there's an accountant in here, somebody can. But it was carried through another year or two and then decided, the Select Board voted to eliminate those lines this year because they are no longer used. We are not drawing down taxes through transfers. You had another question, Tammy? I'm sorry.
I was just wondering what the balance of those funds are.
So I think at a different place in the town report, you have fund balances at the end of the year. The capital fund, the balance is $443,000, $349.27. It starts on page 18, all the fund reports.
I didn't see one for the general reserve fund or the surplus reserve.
Can you hold this for me? That is not in this report and it wasn't in last year's report. I don't know. I think it wasn't, but it's not in this report. I can get that figure for you if you'll hold this on again.
Are there any other questions while we're waiting for that figure?
Hi. I wonder if you could just speak to the lawsuit that's, that you put $45,000 in the budget
I'll take that as a budgetary question rather than speak about the lawsuit. We have been advised by our lawyers that, because there's a very formalized way in which this suit will move through the Superior Court, the Supreme Court, there are already able to be estimated costs related to this. And those costs are now included in the, in the budget for next year. So the costs that, for that, for that suit are not $45,000, but we're, but then the increase in, in legal fees includes an expectation that similar kinds of activity might come toward Guilford that we have needed to use in this past year. So it's a combination of the, of the suit and anticipation of other legal fees that we don't know about yet.
Other questions?
Oh, Sheila is ready.
Oh, Sheila's ready?
In the general reserve fund, there was, I'm sorry, this is the wrong document. Let me go back and check. Oh, take another question.
I'll take another question. Yes, Connie?
With regarding to the suit that you were talking about, are there possibilities of mediation? Has that been investigated?
Yes, thank you. That's not, that's not even possible in this situation. This is a suit that's been taken to the Supreme Court of Vermont. It's not an issue that we can discuss. Guilford's free to discuss. It's been taken by the plaintiff to the Supreme Court and it's being dealt with there.
My understanding that the reason is, Connie?
Can you wait for the microphone?
I don't need one. For BCTV. Oh, of course. Yeah, is it, my understanding that the reason we're involved in this suit is because the town wouldn't deal with the people that were asking for the information in the first
Thank you. I'll just say that that has nothing to do with the budget that we're talking about right now. So we'll, we'll revert that question. Yeah, the suit has nothing to do with the budget, the anticipated legal fees we can speak to, but probably not the nature of the, of the suit. It's not appropriate, I think, at this moment. Happy to talk about it at another moment.
We're going to keep questions tonight to, to the articles. So every question should relate to one of the articles as presented.
Hi, Anne Roder. This doesn't relate to an article, it relates to the budget. I'm interested to see how the Select Board feels it's working to have no paid-for law enforcement in town. I noticed that line item has been zeroed out and I gather that means you're just relying on county, whether it's the sheriff or state police. We used to budget for that and I'm just curious to see how that's working for, how you perceive it to be working.
I'll give it a, I'll give it a try, Anne. We, in talking with the authorities, it turns out that the cost related for the services that we were getting was not, we weren't getting anything equal to what we were actually putting into the service. So we thought we would try it to see what we're doing and it seems to be going well. As far as speeds on roads, we know, we know from the data that we're gathering on the signs that are on Route 5 at this point, we know that those signs are reducing speed, traveler's speeds. So we haven't, we are anticipating as part of our, of our projects going forward that we would place more of those signs around town. We're going to be purchasing a few more of those signs in an effort, in an effort to try to control or at least reduce speeds on roads in that way.
Can I just finish answering this one, Penny? The, at the The, at the next select board meeting, there will be a discussion of regional policing that has been initiated by Wyndham County Sheriff's Office, and it's just the beginning movement in the communities around this area to discuss whether we can come up with another kind of policing for non-traffic violations.
My question was, which conversation we do, Sheila, a few months ago with the speed signs, and that's where, and you talked and saw, I wasn't aware, and I'm sure a lot of other people aren't, when you mentioned there is data. So I thought of the signs just as reminders, you need to slow down. So maybe if you guys can maybe explain a little bit about that, just so people are aware.
Is it, I mean, I don't know whether, Rick, it's not really a topic. No, but is it before, I mean, yeah, we can explain it.
Sure, why don't you explain it?
What gather, what information are we gathering?
You're about to hear, I think.
I think what we, the information that we gather is, is it reads on the speeds as people approach, and it's all kept and recorded. As every car approaches, there's a, there's a reading of that. And then what happens, once the read starts, what happens in response, when they finally pass the sign? So we can actually see speeds generally going down, yeah. And we can, we have the capacity to turn the sign, we can turn the signs on and off. We can turn the data collecting on and off. So we don't have to use it all the time. And the idea is we might be able to turn it off at times and then turn it back on after a month of not gathering data and see if it, if the effects have...
Still gathers data.
It still gathers...
But it doesn't show that it's on.
Oh, the sign is off, but it's still gathering data?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all. It's very simple.
Okay.
Yes, why are we paying for those signs? The state maintains that roadway. We do not, and why should we be paying for the signs they should be paying for?
I don't, I think the answer to that is that, yes, you're absolutely right. They do maintain that road. It's, it's information that we're gathering about how people use the roads in Guilford. And so...
Traffic control is the state's responsibility.
Yeah, okay. You're saying what?
Traffic control is the town's responsibility, not the state's responsibility.
Okay, so Sheila's saying traffic control is a responsibility of the town and not the state. So we're, we have the signs on Route 5, just as an experiment essentially, and it's led us to believe that we can, we can use them effectively in other parts of town.
Could I answer that?
There are restrictions on what kind of safety concerns we can put on Route 5. You know, it is a state highway. We can't authorize having a crosswalk there or even a blinking light without, I mean, we need to have studies of what the traffic patterns are, you know? If it were within our jurisdiction, then we could make decisions based on the town's feeling about the safety of people going from, let's say, Richmond's Garage to the Guilford store. But it's not in our purview to do this, and so we're trying to gather data to find out what's actually happening and then to analyze it and to see where to go with that from here.
So again, next week, on Monday, at the select board meeting, traffic safety in Algiers Village is on the agenda. And the state needed to permit the placement of those signs, but they did not take responsibility for those signs, nor would they purchase them.
Are we going to buy, or is that a contract thing for those signs? And where is it? Is it in the highway budget, or is it in, where is that budgeted?
The way I think it works, Doris, is that the contract for this, for this, the data collection is a project of the town. The town and the highway aspects of the purchasing of the, is I think in the highway. I can't, we had a back and forth about that. I don't know exactly where things are, but Sheila's looking.
Can we move on from the, from the highway signs? Jason, you got one more question?
Just on this, just real quick. I think some of that data might be skewed a little bit. One of those signs is right across from LaRox as you're coming into Guilford Center Village there, and it's on a sharp turn where you're, you're already decreasing speed before you get there. So if that's, the sign is the indication that you're decreasing speed, I don't believe that's, that's true data.
I think we can say that we might agree with that in the sense that we got a read from, I don't remember exactly who, that they also recommended that that might not be the best place for the sign. So we're looking into that and may adjust that.
Okay, can we have a question on another topic?
I have a question on Article 4, to raise and appropriate the sum of $6,000 some dollars for SEVIDS. I think I have a couple of questions, actually. What specifically does SEVIDS do for Guilford residents? And where does the raised sum come from? Is that something that they suggest? Is that an automatic increase?
So I think you're speaking to Article 12.
I'm looking at Article 4, I think, about SEVIDS, Southeastern Vermont Economic Development Strategies.
That's the wrong report.
Oh, that's the wrong, oh. Okay. What article you said?
12.
I think it's in Article 12. And as, again, you could probably learn best what SEVIDS does by speaking with SEVIDS, and it's up to the town voters to make the decision. The town voters have decided that we will support SEVIDS at this point. I don't know what their, what their, exactly, I can't describe what their work is. But I, as I understand, there's a report in the town report, there should be a report there to read from SEVIDS. There should be a report. And I think their dollar figure is based, in all their committees, their asking amount is based on population. I don't know exactly what the figure is. I think it's a dollar, or three dollars per person is what I think it is.
Page 59.
Page 59 for the SEVIDS statement in the town report. Jason?
How are these...
Can you wait for the mic?
Sure. How are these organizations allowed on our ballot? Do they have to get a petition? So is anything, like, why, why isn't, you know, St. Jude's on here as an organization that we'd like to donate as a community?
If you, there was an explanation provided for Article 11. Let's take HCRS as the example. Any, any, any nonprofit can approach the town to receive funds, but in order to get to the list that is Article 12, to get onto the list that is in Article 12, the town has to first submit a petition three years in a row that's voted each year by the town voters. So that's how the nonprofit comes forward. The town chooses to have the nonprofit on the ballot, funded or not, three years in a row. And if they achieve three years in a row, then they move to the list. That is Article 12.
Jason, I believe they get on the ballot by petition. They gather signatures, and they get enough signatures to get on the ballot.
I just wanted to add a little bit to that. During what you might call the probationary period for each one of these nonprofits, they, and that was for three years, each one of them, in addition to writing a report in the town report, would send a representative to town meeting to come and present their work, including statistics, if they had them, about what their benefit had been to the town of Guilford. They answered questions from people, and in some cases, there was very vigorous questioning and debate. But ultimately, the voters at town meeting made a decision about the ones that I read on the list. And so that was the same process for all of them. Now, HCRS, I think, had fallen off their, their request by some kind of inadvertent error, error, and they had to start over again, in fairness, the way that, oop, okay.
Our town had worked.
Our town had worked, right. They had to start over to get the recognition from the voters.
Sheila, did you ever find that figure you were looking for?
I do.
Yeah.
Tammy was asking the question about the 007 reserve fund. The total was $344,665.
Was that the general reserve or the surplus reserve?
There is only one reserve, there is a general reserve fund, yes.
So there is no surplus reserve fund?
No.
I thought I read that in the town, in the professional audit.
So if there is a surplus in revenues over expenses, that goes into the reserve fund. So the description of the general reserve fund is to cover nonrecurring and unanticipated general and highway fund expenses to the town. The total shall be not less than 5% and not more than 20% of the town's annual combined highway and general fund total in the given year. That amount between 5% and 20% is determined at the end of the professional audit, and the auditors then tell us if we had any money, if the town had any excess revenues to put into the general reserve fund.
So when I saw it worded two different ways, surplus is the same as general reserve? I just want to make sure.
I don't know where you, I don't know where you were looking, Tammy, so I don't know.
Yeah, I don't have a written front name, so, thank you.
Other questions? Jason?
I'd like to go back to that, the last one with these nonprofits that we're all, you know, publicly funding. When they get on this list, they do three years, they pass their petitions, they get 5% of the vote, whatever that is. How do they get off the list? Do we just automatically assume that if they've done it for three years, that they don't have to get new residents to sign this? So, so say 10 years ago, an organization did this, is there any chance to get them off without not voting for it? Or do they just automatically put on?
As far as I understand, every organization that's on the list remains on the list until they request to be taken off. I don't know of a mechanism by which, in our community, I don't know of a mechanism by which an organization can be taken from the list.
Well, it's a warranted article, so, so the figures can be adjusted.
And it's also true that the, yeah, the town, for instance, the town voters could vote down the entire Article 12, and that would take everyone off the list.
Or amend it.
So it can be changed in town meeting?
I'm sorry, Rick. Yeah, if a person wanted to contest Article 12, to say, you know, after it's been moved and seconded, I think a resident can say that they'd like to amend the article, to subtract, you know, I would imagine if somebody had an objection to a specific, a specific one of these, then they would want to let the voters know which one they wanted to remove and why. You know, that has happened in the past, that people have had an objection, and they get to state their case and have a discussion among the voters, and then the voters will vote on the amendment. And if the amendment were to pass, which in my recollection, it has not, but still, they've had a chance to, to state their case, and then you go back to the original motion. So people do have that opportunity. And if there is a problem with one of these or more of these organizations, then, you know, it would be great to bring it to people's attention and maybe even give the organizations a chance to state what they feel their benefit is in person. You know, just to have a more vigorous and fair-minded conversation.
Okay, can we make this the last question on this topic? Jason?
Love to. You know, but for instance, we asked what SVEDS does, and chairman said that he did not know what they did, yet we approved this at some point or another. Is there anyone in this room that knows what SVEDS does and how they're going to help, directly help Guilford?
Sure. It's in the town report.
There's a report in the town report. I, what I meant was, I don't know exactly, enough to speak to it with authority so that I would feel confident to answer for the entire community. I think, yeah, they'll, they'll be at town meeting. We can speak with them directly.
I think you'll have the table.
Yeah, yeah.
So no one in this room knows what SVEDS is?
Your people can, but Jason, I don't think it's a good use of our time to go into each of these organizations. It's in the town report. There'll be a representative at the town meeting making a presentation, and they, you can question them in person at the meeting. But, you know, I think we need to move on from this, if possible. Yes?
I'm going to stick with this topic just one more minute. Sorry, Rick. First of all, each, each organization must submit a budget and a request every year. They're not automatically put back on. Also, John Shaw, do you remember a couple of years ago, he really dug into SEVIDS and did a lot of research and had a lot of questions? He'd be, he's a, he's a good resource. He, is John here? I don't know. Anyway, I know we don't want to get into this now, but I'm just saying, people asked a lot of rigorous questions. It's all about economic development regionally, and there was quite a bit of discussion about it, so.
Can we make this the last one?
I don't know. I'm not sure. I'm assuming all of these are... Square for the mic. Thank you. You could leave one here. I believe all of these are nonprofits, and they can all apply for grant funds. I don't believe that it's appropriate for the town to fund all of these nonprofits when they can already get grants. If you want to spend your own taxpayer money to fund these nonprofits, well, that's your prerogative. But to, to ask the whole town to vote for these, I think, is inappropriate when they could easily just get grant money. I don't think it's our responsibility. I mentioned a nonprofit called, you know, there's so many out there, but why weren't we helping, you know, kids with cancer? Where do we draw the line? I think that the town should not be making this decision for individuals.
I want to go to Article 5 about the select board appointing a municipal treasurer. I'm a little bit confused by this because the person that you've appointed or are going to appoint is the same one who's also running. So I don't, I don't understand the logistics of changing the method of selection. And also, how does that work? If this article is approved, how does that work to, the timing and the logistics of changing the method?
Good questions, Connie, and it is complicated. It's a bit tricky. So when Penny let us know that she would be resigning, there would come an open seat. If nothing changed, the town would be electing a town treasurer, just as we've elected Penny for many years to be the town treasurer. So that is why, so Ellie Minnan is on the ballot if the town chooses to move ahead, as we always have, with an elected treasurer. The select board, however, in the leading up to all of this, the March 7th, and with the situations that we've been in in the last, during COVID, and especially in the last year, and the complications of various funding issues, it's been, it's been advised that we not assume that we will get the best treasurer if it's an elected person. Granted, we all have goodwill, we all have good interests, we all care about our town, but there are stories in Vermont of... but there are stories in Vermont of elected treasurers who simply didn't, don't show up for work. They don't do the work for the town. They got elected, and they don't do anything to help the town move forward. And there's nothing that can be done because there's no authority, except the next election is the only authority. Um, so that's a scary story. That's happened near Guilford, uh, in, in, in town, in a town very near Guilford that alarms us. Uh, also, there's the issue that the Select Board takes very seriously all the questions that have been coming to us about the financial issues. And we want to have a better understanding of what's going on. And one of the ways that we can do that is if we can craft a job description and have some authority over what, what this town treasurer does, then we can help the town, we believe we can help the town get into a better footing from a reporting and an understanding point of view. That's the justification from the Select Board's side for doing this. If, if the, if, if the, uh, person, uh, is elected, if a treasurer is elected, there's essentially a description of what that person needs to do that comes from the state. And that's the total of that person's job. If the person is, uh, appointed by the town, we have an opportunity to, uh, up the ante and strengthen the, the, uh, position and strengthen its, its responsibilities to the town. And so it's, it's a decision that we've made, that we think it's the right way to go forward. It's also been recommended to us by our current town treasurer, uh, that we take this, this road. So we're in agreement with Penny that this is a good idea. It is confusing. We have the, we have the back, in the sense that, uh, we have the opportu, we have the, the safety net that if the town chooses not to move forward with an appointed treasurer, we know who will be the town treasurer because she's on the, she's on the ballot to be elected. Yes?
Another aspect that we've come up with is a greater need for continuity, a desire for greater continuity. You know, those of you who come to Select Board meetings and have been working to understand the, um, the reporting, you know, the categories and the reporting, uh, of the town's financial, uh, records, um, have noticed that there are, are sort of holes in the history. And that's something that, uh, I'm really concerned about. I'm not the most fiscally sophisticated person. And I strive to understand all of these, these things better all the time. And I think that having the continuity of somebody, especially, we have a, a person who's already familiar with the workings of the town office and who is ready to take on a longer stint, you know? And I think that this would be to our advantage.
If, uh, if Ellie gets, um, voted in, do you, will you guys, if you think that you found somebody better, will you just? And another thing is, how does the treasurer balance out with our up-and-coming, um, new town administrator? How is the overlap there with, uh, overlooking the funds?
Thank you, Doris. Yeah, and I neglected to say one of the thing about the timing of all this. Uh, we have a grace period to solve, any town has a grace period to solve all of these issues, a forty-five day grace period to solve everything and get it all lined up, whichever way the town, the town go, whichever way the town votes. So, um, I, our intention, we, part of best practices, uh, was that the, the town, the Select Board, uh, conducted interviews for the town treasurer role, hoping that we would, with the, with the dream that we would be able to appoint. And, oops, our preferred candidate is Ellie Mayonan. So it just happens to be really great that she's also running for the position. And if we have the opportunity to appoint her, we will be appointing Ellie. We know that already. And the overlap with the town, it's an unusual moment in Guilford we're walking into here. Uh, we, after, after town, after the election, we, Guilford will be welcoming a new town administrator, a new town clerk, and a new town treasurer, all at the same time. That's unusual. So we're gearing up for really what we hope to be, will be a very positive time. Uh, we, um, the, I, I think it's fair to say, with Sheila's help, the Select Board has a very, uh, a very much greater understanding of the responsibilities of all these different tasks. And we see, um, we see the possibilities here. We're not, we're not nailing it all down right now. We see the possibilities for there to be some flexibility so we can take advantage of the strengths of these three new, uh, holders of these positions and be able to build the very best possible team we can for Guilford, knowing that there are very clear, uh, policies and practices that need to be in place and begin to shore up some of the, uh, some of the gaps that Veranda was talking about. That's really in our minds.
Jason?
This doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. Um, you know, so if Ellie and Ben, well, there's someone in Guilford that wants to run for this position, because if you want to run for this position, you have to be a resident of Guilford. Now, if the Select Board wants to appoint someone, they don't have to be a resident of Guilford. So they're not, they're accountable to the Select Board. They're not accountable to us. And if the Select Board wants to fire Ellie, they absolutely have the authority to do that if we let them appoint her. So if they say they're not going to, that, that may be their intent right now, but that they absolutely have the authority to fire her at any given point. That is, they report to her, they do not report, she does not report to us anymore. That being said, what happens if, if Ellie decides she doesn't want to run, and all of a sudden, we have someone that doesn't live in our town that is only reporting directly to the Select Board? And if we have a question about our, our treasurer and how they're dealing with this, and the Select Board is the one who they're reporting to, that certainly takes some authority away from the people, and I find that very disturbing. On the other end of this, why at this point, if the Select Board is already wanting to appoint this, why would they have the ballot initiative now, knowing that Ellie is going to be there for at least three years? Why continue with this ballot amendment? It should be, it should be tabled. Uh, the Select Board already has the authority to appoint someone. If someone doesn't get voted in, the Select Board could then, has the authority to point. Yes, they do, and don't shake your head at me, they do. They absolutely have the authority to, that's how Penny got started with there. She was appointed. Was she not appointed? Anyway, so the Select Board obviously has the authority to appoint someone if there isn't someone filling that position. Now they just want to do this ahead of it, so they have complete control over that. And I find that very troublesome.
I'll just respond to that, uh, to say that, uh, I think it's less about the person that, that the Select Board is interested in controlling. I think what the Select Board's attempting to do is bring the various capacities and the various needs in the town into better collaboration and better understanding. Uh, and so, while, as I stated earlier, uh, our understanding is that if, if a treasurer is elected, if a treasurer is elected by the town, which we've been functioning with, uh, all these years, which is fine, there is a, a set of responsibilities that are state-mandated responsibilities. What the Select Board hopes to do is up the ante a bit and, and increase the capacity for the, the, uh, the appointed treasurer to work more closely with the staff, or perhaps take on some other duties that aren't mandated by the state. That then becomes a better fit for the town of Guilford, is what we have in mind. I think it's less about trying to control and take away power from the, from the, uh, elected folks of Guilford, whom we trust very, very much. But I think it's more about trying to put together a team in the office that can really do the work that you all hope will be done. We've heard a lot over the last year or two about, uh, issues in the town, about gaps in information, about lapses in understanding of what's going on. We're attempting to fix that now, and we hope we can do that if we're given the authority by you to do that. We understand that we may not get it, we understand that. But it's our intent to try to put things together the best we possibly can for the town. It's not as much about taking away power as it might be stated.
Tammy?
Um, so I still have questions on the funds. When you, you were telling me that it's just a general reserve fund. So I found the page from the professional audit that we received. It's on page twelve, if you wanted to look it up. And it's, it's saying that total governmental funds, because it has other governmental funds all swarmed into one. I don't know what makes these funds up. But it says for total governmental funds, we have almost seven million dollars in there. So I'm wondering, with all these different funds that we have, when they're not in the town report, we don't know not only how much money is in each one of those funds, but what those funds are being used for. Um, because there's a couple of questions that you guys have helped me with recently in this past year, trying to figure out, like the library, where the library edition funds came from. That also I don't see in the town report. We ended up spending over eighty thousand dollars this last, just fiscal year 2022, that just ended, for the library. I don't find it in the town report. And then looking at that, that same audit, there is a line item called Culture and Recreation. I have no idea what that is. But in year end 2021, we'd only spent just over five thousand dollars. But then this last year, 2022, we spent almost eighty-three thousand dollars. So I'm wondering, if we have all of these funds with all of this money, I keep hearing we have to have a budget increase this year because of extra legal fees. But I don't think that budgeting fifty thousand dollars for extra legal fees outweighs the, actually, almost, right? Eighty thousand, almost eighty-three thousand dollars for culture and recreation, as well as the money for the library. That stuff is big numbers, and I'm not seeing it in the town report. And I don't know what funds are covering these things, or what these things even are.
Tammy, I think you're asking about the professional audit report, which is not a topic tonight.
I'm asking why the information from that isn't in the town report. There's a lot of different funds.
It's a different kind of report. It's a picture in time, okay? And of the previous year. But we don't have, I don't know, Penny, do we have seven million dollars in the bank?
We do, I don't know where it is.
I know, right? But we have assets and liabilities, and, and I, I cannot begin to explain the audit tonight, the professional audit report tonight. If you have a specific question about a number, like where do we draw our funds from? Is that what you're asking?
I'm wondering which funds come up with all that money and why they're not in the town report. It seems like we're asking for more money to be in the budget.
Tammy, can you use the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just thinking that if we're asking for more money in the budget for this year, to be voted in for this year, and we're explaining that it's, one of the reasons is the legal fees that we're facing, how did we get the money to pay for all these other things that weren't budgeted items that we approved as taxpayers?
Let me, let me take two examples for you. This year to date, we've had, I'm just gonna say roughly eleven or twelve thousand dollars in legal fees, and we already, in this fiscal year '23, and we have, and we budgeted, I don't know what last year, let's say five thousand. So we have, that's a pretty remarkable, it's not two or three dollars, or two or three hundred dollars over the budgeted amount. It's a large amount, it's like three hundred percent of the budget. So we have to figure out, the Select Board, it is the Select Board's responsibility to determine where the money is coming from, to pay for that unanticipated budgeted expense. And the Select Board determined at a Select Board meeting some time ago to draw on the general reserve fund, to draw it down as these bills were incurred, because we went over budget. So now, the general reserve fund, which as you recall, I said, is unanticipated expenses, is going to be drawn down by the amount of excess legal fees, but over budget for fiscal year '23. That's one example. That's only, so far, seven or eight thousand dollars. It could be much more by June 30th, I don't know. In terms of the library, the library, all the, all the costs for the library, which the town anticipated was going to be an expense and for which the town created a budget, and a fund, an 004, but fund, I think it's called 004, 401. That fund was set up in anticipation that the Guilford Free Library Expansion and Renovation Project was going to go forward, and it was set up to track the revenues for that project and the expenses for that project. And over time, over the last several years of doing studies and trying to, trying to figure out if this was a feasible project, and working with a consultant, and working with legal, um, I think there were some legal expenses on that, I don't remember exactly, there were. Um, so that people, so the expenses were tracked as if they were going to be in a capital, in a capital fund. But the project was turned down. And not one dollar of those eighty-three thousand dollars that were considered to have been part of that capital project could then be accounted for as a capital expense. They had to be covered from general reserve, from the grant that was received to take care of the initial parts of this. And they were accounted for in general accounting lines in the 003 budget. They never became a capital expense because the project did not go forward, and the project, none of the expenses related were, could have been capitalized. So the eighty-three thousand dollars was again covered by different resources. The general reserve fund, um, a, um, a grant that we got for thirty-eight, I can't remember exactly. I don't have the numbers in front of me right now.
I mean, just for 2022, we didn't have grants, didn't come in for fiscal year that ended in 2022.
Fiscal year, there were a lot of expenses.
I'm talking about this town report.
Okay, this town report only, does not show in any capital expenses for the library. There were no capital expenses for the library.
There is one.
There have been no capital expenses for the library. I'm very clear on that.
Okay, um, so if you go to the capital expense part in the town report, I don't have that page open, if anyone has it. There is an expense listed there as, um, an unanticipated expense. And it's one of the same invoices that, we had multiple invoices for Goldstone Architecture. And one of those is out of the capital expense, saying it's, it was an unanticipated expense, which even that's confusing to me, because they were all the same type of invoices.
I'm sorry, you know a page around, Tammy?
Um, I have somewhere, hold on. Page eighteen.
That is a capital, an unanticipated capital expense. It is not an unanticipated library expense.
But it was for the library, so I'm just confused on why that one could be put under the capital.
I have to look into that, Tammy. I don't have an answer right now, I'm sorry.
Do we send another question?
I didn't get a chance to look at the professional audit, but Tammy mentioned something about a culture and recreation fund of somewhere around, it's eighty thousand dollars was what the expenditure was at. And does anyone have any idea of what that is about? Culture and recreation, eighty-some-odd thousand dollars?
I, I don't have the answer to that. That would be about a fiscal audit report for the year 2022. I think we're here to talk about 2024. I don't have an answer. We can probably get it, but we don't have one now, I don't think.
So, so could that be addressed at a Select Board meeting, or?
What I, I, I would like to say once again to the community, any of these kinds of questions are fantastic if, uh, to be forwarded to me directly as questions, and then we can ferret them out into the proper place to get them answered. They don't generally work well. They're not often the points of business that need to be taken care of. They're not often the points of business that need to be taken care of at at the meeting we're at. So they don't move the business of the town forward necessarily. So we would probably prefer to deal with the questions outside of the meeting so that we can get the best possible answers to the to community members that have them.
I just wanted to say real quick, I reached out to the town auditors because I thought they were responsible for the town report. I had actually asked the town auditors all the questions I'm asking you now, and I was told to ask these questions tonight. So that's why I'm asking them.
I think your questions, so long as they relate to the fiscal year 2024 is great, and we need them. I'm not saying the question should not be asked. I'm only talking about questions that relate to other issues that aren't necessarily about the budget that we're talking about tonight, like who might know something about a recreation fund in 2022? It's not really germane to tonight's discussion. We want to understand it. It doesn't affect the budget. It's an information question, as I understand it. We want to get a good answer for it, but we won't be able to have it tonight, probably.
One sec, Jason, before you go.
Just a sec. I wanted to add, you know, once we have answered these questions, we can we can post frequently asked questions or infrequently asked questions in Front Porch Forum. You know, just if there are a number of people who really want to follow up with these facts, then we can find the best possible way to to disseminate them.
Yeah, I'll just say quickly that we're working on the redesign for the new website for the town, and one of the elements of it will be just these kinds of questions that come forward to the select board, to me or to any of us individually, or the questions that are raised at the select board meetings that we're not able to have answers for right then. We will get answers, and that's a place where those answers will start to go to the best of our abilities.
I think that's a great idea. Jason, hang on, before you ask the question, we're well into our second hour here, and we're hoping to hear from the candidates for select board. We're hoping to hear from the school district. We're hoping to meet our new town agent. Is it okay if we move on from the select board? Oh, you've got one more question, Jason?
Yes.
Okay, people nodding their head, so you want to ask one more question?
I want to ask one more.
I know you do, but how about one more?
You just come here, you don't have to be here if you don't want to answer questions.
Yeah, but your questions are repetitive. It's not.
Let's not get into an argument. Jason, how about one more question, and then we'll move on.
See, so when you don't get an answer, you keep asking the question.
This is, this isn't.
Okay, if people want to speak, please raise your hand, wait for the microphone. Okay? Jason's going to ask his last question, then we'll move on to the candidates.
This will not be my last question.
Okay, it's the last one I'm going to recognize because we're going to move on.
I'd like to talk about the treasurer budget item here. It says fiscal year 2022, the combined, the treasurer and the assistant treasurer and all of their expenses was $26,900. We budgeted last year $40,724, and we're at $15,600 of that currently. For fiscal year 24, we're upping that salary to $64,486. So we went from 2022 at 20, almost 27,000 to 2024 to $64,500. I don't, I think that's an extraordinary increase in salary over a two-year period.
Jason is reading the entire budget for the treasurer office. It includes treasurer salary, assistant treasurer salary, annual training, travel and expenses, and the total projected budget for fiscal year 24 is $64,486. It was 40,000 budgeted in about 40,724 in fiscal year 23. And we have had fewer expenses. The budget will actually come in approximately $5,000 lower, so it'll be around 59, not 64. It's projected to be that. However, I would like to point out that for both the town administrator position and the town treasurer position, the salaries are finally close to being in line with other salaries in the region.
Okay, let's move on to our select board candidates. Oh, I'm sorry, we're going to meet the town agent first. Thank you, Zion.
Thanks, Rick. I'd just like to take a moment, folks, just to say that we are very happy to introduce our new town administrator, who is Erica Elder. We she's here this evening, and many of you do know who she is. Through a multi-candidate process, we are, we're very happy that Erica has come forth and will has offered to serve. She comes from, her most recent stints of work are at Berkeley Vellar and with the Stralling of the Heifers. She lives on Sweet Pond Road. She's a Guilford resident, and she knows the town well by virtue of the fact that we understand that she has watched every single select board meeting for the last two years to get boned up about how our town is working. So we're very great, we're very excited to have her. She will be in the office full-time, as I understand it, beginning March 20th, I think that's right. And prior to that, we'll see, we'll begin to see her as she begins to make her way toward the office. So we're very excited. Just want to say, welcome. Yeah, and and we're very pleased that Sheila will continue to provide context for a while. Sheila's not leaving immediately as interim town administrator, but they they're creating a workable exit plan, and we'll get moving from there. So welcome, Erica.
And while we're applauding, I'd like to ask you to give Sheila Mars a round of applause.
Hang on one second, Veranda. So it's time to meet the candidates. We've got, we've got two contested positions. For the for the one seat that Veranda now holds, she's a candidate, she's going to speak first, and then Jason, if you want to speak. Asking people to keep it between three to five minutes. Then we have an open seat, and Tara Chaney is going to speak first. She's here. And Jason, if you want to speak again for that seat, you may. And then we're going to hear a statement from Jamie Durham, read by Steve Lemke, because Jamie can't be here. It's school vacation week, she's out of town. So let's start with the Veranda.
Well, thank you for that vigorous conversation. It's one of the things I admire about the town of Guilford and one of the things I dread. I mean, I really do appreciate how much people care here. Anyway, I'm Veranda, and I'm vice chair of the Guilford Select Board. I'm running for a third three-year term, having served through the changes of pandemic times. Since joining, I've learned so much about neighborly resilience, grassroots governance, and the complex requirements of state statutes. As vice chair, I support the chair. I coordinate community comments, encouraging residents to share ideas and events. I review the and present the warrants for payment. I am the liaison to the Cemetery Commission and the Recreation Commission, and I volunteer with Window Dressers, a project of the Energy Committee. Last year, on behalf of the select board, I hosted the celebration of Lucy and Abijah Prince, the setting of the historic marker, and I shared my poem at the reopening of the Broadbrook Community Center. I moved to Packer Corners in 1968, drawn by the peaceful beauty of the land, the tradition of self-reliance and tolerant neighborliness. We created a community where we could write, make art, grow food, and while much has changed, our neighborhood remains close-knit, close-knit and public-spirited. I raised two daughters here and worked as a teaching poet at Guilford Central School and all around New England. At a divisive time in our town around 2007, I began writing kitchen talks with Guilford elders. From their youthful stories of 31 Guilford elders, I created Broadbrook Anthology, a play for voices first presented during Guilford's 250th celebration. I currently work with art in the neighborhood, creating poetry with kids who live in Brattleboro's public housing. Language gives me pleasure. My artistic work is based on curiosity, patient listening, and making deep, honest connections. I try to apply apply these values to my civic life. The Brattleboro reformer asked me to add a few answers to questions, and these are they. What do I appreciate most about Guilford? I appreciate cooperation in Guilford, how neighbors wrap around each other in times of need, the return of the Guilford Country Store and the Broadbrook Community Center partnering with Broadbrook Grange, the Guilford Free Library, Guilford Cares, Neighborhood Roots, Guilford Folk. This spring will bring change. A new town clerk, town treasurer, and town administrator will start working, assisted by the current staff. One of the most pressing issues here in our community for me, they are public trust and affordability. We must work together locally and regionally to weatherize homes and create new housing opportunities for young families and older residents while protecting our environment. I am proud to have served with visionary, down-to-earth, and cooperative colleagues, and I look forward to my next chapter. So thank you.
Sorry, I didn't prepare anything for this, and I don't suppose I'm going to change anyone's minds here. I grew up in Vernon. My father took a job, he was one of, took up 16 applications right out of the Navy, and he got a job at Vermont Yankee as an assistant operator when I was four years old. Two brothers grew up in Vernon. 10 years ago, my best friend from kindergarten and I bought a piece of property in Guilford on Slate Rock Road, on top of Slate Rock Road, Lakewood, and we turned it into Lakewood Maple Farm. We sell firewood, lumber, maple products. I got involved with politics, I guess you call it, because of when the Planning Commission got dissolved last year. I saw that, and I thought, well, I didn't think that was very good. So I started paying attention. The legal battles, I missed that, I'm sorry, I was putting Lincoln to bed. I have a nine-month-year-old son, Lindsay and I, Lincoln, and we put him to bed, so I was a little late, and I heard about the $50,000 budget. I want everyone in this room to be very clear that I have one legal case against the select board right now. I have made accusations of open meeting violations, but I have one legal case going with the select board right now, and that's because I wanted the conflict of interest questionnaires. Every year, the select board is supposed to fill out these conflict of interest questionnaires so we know where their conflicts lie. For instance, Richard Wazansky, a select board member who's not going to be here with anymore, he had been recusing himself from, because he's a library trustee for years. He even said in a meeting, he said, I'm recusing myself because I am a trustee of the library. But when he became the chairman, he stopped recusing himself, and not only did he not recuse himself, he voted, passed the motion and voted for securing over $1.3 million to the library. When I asked about these documents, Peter Rude, our town administrator, said, I have 60 pages of these, and then he fell sick. And I looked for these, and I had to appeal again for them, and finally I started getting some, but I only got 18 pages when I was supposed to get 60. And I didn't get anything from Mr. Wazansky other than his last year, which was not filled out and was not signed by him. So when I brought this to the select board's attention, thought this was a problem, they said that they don't need to hold these documents, that they're not required to retain them. So I had no choice. I appealed to the agency, and the only choice, only recourse I have at this point, if I disagree with them, is to appeal to the court. And they hired an uptown lawyer, they went to the state of Vermont, all the way up to Burlington, they hired a lawyer that we're now having to pay more money because they're raising their rates because they don't want to fill out these documents. One of my criteria is to end this all was just for them to fill them out. They could have filled these out retroactively, but they're choosing not to because they're doing wrong. And that's why I'm running again. If you will watch all these select board meetings for the last two years, our new town administrator, I'd like to ask you, have you ever seen a meeting where there wasn't a complete "aye," where everyone said "aye"? In all those meetings you've watched, can you find, can you find one meeting where someone just said something of a dissenting view? It's almost like they meet beforehand, and they know what they want to vote on before we even get a chance to talk about it. So I'm here, I'm running. I know this is a popularity contest, I'm not going to win, but I'm here, and I'm going to continue to fight for open, transparent government. That's all.
Now we will hear from Tara Chaney. This is for the open seat. We have three candidates.
Thank you. I quickly wanted to say something about Article 12. Article 12 supports the most vulnerable population of people in our communities, women, children, homeless people, elderly people, disabled people. I worked at the Gathering Place as a program manager, nurse, and art director for three years, and I know firsthand that none of these companies can run on grants alone. They all require fundraising and donations. So I just wanted to say that quickly. My name's Tara Chaney. I've been a Guilford resident, three days shy of 50 years. I'm running for the two-year select board seat. A large part of my desire to be on the select board is based on history, heritage, and tradition. My grandfather, Harvey Cutting, was on the select board for nine years. He was also the Guilford Road Commissioner for 17 years and a farmer all his life. My Uncle Clayton Cutting was also a select board member for many years. My Aunt Sally Marie Carpenter LaRocque was the town clerk for 13 years. I grew up with family members through blood and marriage, building, working in, and caring about this town. I feel an obligation and duty to represent the town of Guilford. I'm at a place in my life where I've learned a vast skill set from life experience and my careers to be able to be level-headed, middle-of-the-road, and a knowledgeable select board member. I'm a nurse, holistic health practitioner, artist, body worker, and owner of multiple businesses. I'm working on becoming a board-certified life coach. For the past nine years and currently, I've been the CEO of Vermont Roadworks, an asphalt paving company that I co-own with my husband Fred. I am very proud and honored to have been the recipient of the 2021 Reformer Women Business Leader Award. In 2022, Vermont Roadworks went on to win the Small Business Association Award for Vermont's Women-Owned Business of the Year. I need another hand. Fred and I love Guilford, and we have donated our business services and materials to the town. We have performed pothole repairs at the Guilford store and mowing and landscaping at the Guilford playscape. Last year, we seal-coated and line-stripped the entire lot at the fire station. And so far this year, we donated the use of our hot box for the town crew. We value community, and we want to help and nurture ours. My career and experience allow me to bring immeasurable skills in all aspects of life that are directly applicable to many of the functions and issues that a select board member would be faced with. I'm no stranger to struggle, resilience, hardship, and perseverance. I'm also very open-minded and have vision. I'm compassionate and empathetic, yet strong in my convictions, and have often been a champion for people without a voice and for what is right and just. With that said, people in Guilford work really hard. It's true, there are independently wealthy people here, but my neighbors and my children, my family, and my ancestors are working class. Farmers are a different class altogether, the hardest way of life. I never had the designer jeans, and we could only afford riding lessons for a couple weeks. I remember as a child, one year, my father was so happy to have a gross of $473. In many ways, this is no different now. People cannot afford to live in Guilford. They cannot afford to live in Vermont. Guilford is not Washington. We should be able to have a better grasp on spending at the town level. And I have to address this because it affects us all, and it also is my opinion, but $50,000 allocated from $5,000 for legal fees as well as time and resources spent should not have to happen. I completely understand the desire and necessity for transparency. I really, really do. However, when the town has an attorney and the court and people with law degrees advise, and then the suit is dismissed in the superior court, that should be the end of it. Yes, this prompts people to educate themselves further, which is good. Make sure all bylaws are being followed, I's and T's are dotted, expenditures are documented. The end. I repeat, Guilford is not a microcosm of what I repeat, Guilford is not a microcosm of Washington. When we look at negotiations in Washington, there are a lot of people that cannot accept facts, cannot negotiate or mediate, and cannot see past their own agenda. Many politicians and their supporters are rigid and are not looking out for the community or nation as a whole. Select Board members are human and are volunteers. It is not mandatory to be able to recite the Constitution. People should not be demonized or penalized for not knowing everything. It is a good candidate who can research prior to the meetings by way of agenda. A good candidate will be understanding and work well with others. I will put community first. Division and planting seeds of divisiveness is what is wrong all across our country. Lastly, what makes me a good candidate for the Select Board? I'm highly adaptable, a natural leader, and very open-minded, and can understand both positions if there is opposition. I know the costs that go into construction, paving, or road repairs, and a fair price to accept a bid. I'm experienced in human resources and finances, and know how to navigate and resolve conflict. I know what a conflict of interest is, and that compliance in business and politics is imperative. Being transparent and open is the best policy. Also, kindness wins in my book. People need to be nicer and more respectful to each other in general. I'm a conscious person and understand what it means to be human. No one is perfect. We are all uniquely imperfect. The key to growth is by learning from one's mistakes, acceptance, and forgiveness. I strive to be better and do better every day. If I win your vote, I will walk in the footsteps of my Guilford ancestors and represent this town to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Jason, did you want to speak again?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you so much. It seems that this $50,000 keeps coming up, and everyone's kind of got an opinion on it, but no one's actually asking me. No one's asking me why the court threw that out, what the Select Board's lawyer did to throw that out. No one's asking me. And as far as this, I've never seen you at a Select Board meeting. I've watched them, like our new town administrator, I've watched every one of them. I've never seen you there. I've never seen your opinion. And yet, you come in here, and you say, like, you want to be helpful, and you want to do all these things, but the first thing you do is you slap me down, and you don't even know the cases. And if you knew the case, and if you would read it, then we could have a discussion about it. But instead, you got in front of this room, and you decided to drag me into this when you don't know the facts of the matter. Aside from that, we have a conflict of interest problem in this town. There is a serious conflict of interest problem. We have our town administrator, who's also our Finance Advisory Committee Chair, who's also the treasurer of the Friends of Algiers, and all of this ARPA money is going to the Friends of Algiers. They're on the agenda again for next Monday to get more ARPA funds. There were three businesses in town that received ARPA funds. They are all directly affiliated with the Friends of Algiers. Our Finance Advisory Committee Chairperson was a part of this. That's a problem. That's a problem. When you've got the library treasurer and trustee that's trying to secure $1.3 million for his library, that's a problem. When you have our chairman, who is associated with the DV Fiber, and then all of a sudden we get $30,000 in ARPA grants, that's not necessary to go to DV Fiber, when even Katie Buckley said, "We don't need to spend that kind of money for that," but yet we donated $30,000, you see all of these connections here. And it is, it's an incestuous little group, and they are controlling it, whether it's the library or the Friends of Algiers. That's what's going on in our town, and you can blame me all you want, but I'm just exposing this. If you want to talk to me, Tara, if you want to talk to me about this, then let's talk about it, but don't call me out in a room full of people when you don't know the facts.
I got facts from what I read in the newspaper.
Hang on, hang on, people. I just got a note from Sheila saying the roads are getting bad. Can we hear from, if people need to want to leave because of the roads, feel free to. Steve Luntz is going to read a statement from Jamie Durham, and then we're going to hear from Sean Murphy about the district and Penny. Is that okay with people? Okay, Steve, you're up.
Okay. Three questions you might have. Who's Jamie Durham? Why isn't she here tonight? And why am I talking in her stead? Jamie Durham is a young, earnest Guilford resident who's hoping to get to be elected to the two-year Select Board seat. Why is she not here? As Rick referenced, she and her husband are the proud parents of two young boys who are in the Guilford Central School, and they're not able to be here tonight because many months ago, they scheduled a February break vacation, and family took precedent over pre-town meeting. And why am I standing in her stead? A couple weeks ago, I went to a local gathering, and I heard somebody say to Jamie, "Why are you running for Select Board?" Sort of like that. And she had a very articulate message to send. And then I learned that she wasn't going to be able to be here tonight. So, I said to Jamie, "You should write that down, or zoom in, or do something else." And she said, "Okay, I'll try that, and then you should get somebody to read it." So, guess what happened? She wrote it down, and I get to read it, all right? So, I just want to say, I have to be careful what I say tonight, too, because as I understand, Jamie is actually watching tonight, so the heat is on. As Jamie says, she's sorry she can't be here tonight. She's truly, she really wishes she could be. Earnestly, she wishes that there wasn't a conflict. But then the question came up, is why would she want to run for Select Board? And she says, "I'm running for this seat because I want to help our town, and I think my skills would be best put to use on the Select Board. I'm not particularly politically ambitious, nor do I have a specific agenda, but I'm a logical, active-minded thinker and an empathetic listener, and I would look forward to the opportunity to engage with folks of all perspectives and help us functionally move forward as a community." So, then the question comes up, is does she have any community experience? Because one of the things that's important in a Select Board member is to understand what's going on in the community and who's doing it. So, Jamie says, "This past summer, I was chair of Guilford's ARPA Advisory Committee and had the privilege to work with a diverse, intelligent, and engaged group of Guilford citizens to determine what might be the best use of ARPA dollars in our town. Together with committee members Patty Bullock, Dan Calley, Vicky Sterling, and Julie Holland, we worked to engage the townsfolk in our research and decision-making process, and we submitted a report to the Select Board on the best use of ARPA dollars." Now, you should know something, that when the Select Board got this, they were pretty well stunned by the quality of the work that this small but engaged committee did. And not only was it appreciated by this town, it's being held as an exemplary report throughout the state. So, the work that Jamie and her cohort, who are many in this room tonight, did is an example of the kind of work that she did do and can do for the town. She said it also gave her an insight to what people want for the future of Guilford. She says, "My additional work in the committee includes my years as the administrative manager of the Broadbrook Community Center, obviously, this building from 2019 to 2021. This gave me the opportunity to work in partnership with a number of other organizations in town, including Guilford Cares, the school, the library, the Grange, and the various committees and commissions that use the space. I'm grateful for those years, as they also gave me a great appreciation for the long history of this building, the history of Guilford, and the deep family roots that link folks in this town. Working here and seeing this go from the Grange to the BBCC and incorporate the Grange, Jamie said, was just so rewarding to her, and to be able to work with all the various commissions and committee members was fantastic." She says, "Our family is relatively new here, but we are settled, stable, and staying." Settled, stable, and staying. My husband and I are also Guilford Green Update Coordinators, which Ellie would say, "Bravo." Right in the back, Ellie's voting already. She said, "We also run a small family construction company together. I'm better at writing reports than operating a skill saw, so my job is to manage the finances, the marketing, the contracts, the employees, the scheduling, and all the other administrative tasks that are necessary to run a business. While I don't run the wires or haul the lumber, I have a great appreciation for the skilled trades that are the core of our work." So, the people and the trades make up that whole quarter of Guilford. My primary work before coming to Guilford was in education and English language teaching. I'm interested in culture, travel, foreign languages, and more than anything, I enjoy being a good listener and a collaborative learner. Everybody has a story to tell and an opinion that is worth hearing. In addition to my skills that I've mentioned before, I also have expertise in research and writing, public relations, and tech support, including web design and digital communications. So, does anybody think we need a little tech support here? You know, this looks like a Zoom meeting come to life tonight. I'm so used to seeing all the little squares on the screen, but here's everybody right now. So, she says, "It's a challenge for me to identify what else might be of interest for you to know about me, but I hope this statement gives you a sense of why I truly believe I'm the best candidate for the position. I would be very grateful for the opportunity to serve the town that my family now calls home. You can find additional information about me and my recent candidate statement in the Gazette. I also invite you to please reach out to me directly if you have any questions. I am an open book and love to chat. Steve has my email address. I do. I apologize again for not being there in person tonight, and thanks again to Steve for reading, and thank you for listening. Jamie Durham."
This is Jamie's email. Maybe I can just, you know, CCTV or something like that. Anyway, it says, "Jamie.s..." Can you hold, can you speak into the microphone?
Sorry. Jamie Durham's email address is Jamie, J-A-I-M-E dot s dot Durham, D-U-R-H-A-M at gmail dot com. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. And great comment about all little Zoom squares out there. It's so great to be here with everybody. It really is. Now, let's hear from Sean about the district, the school district. Oh. Okay, wait, wait. Penny's got something to read or say.
I'm speaking for Danielle Latulip, who is on the ballot as the new town clerk. She's been with me for a year and a half, and she's a Guilford resident, and she has written something for me to read. Over the past two years, it's been a pleasure to work with many Guilford residents as the Assistant Town Clerk and Assistant Treasurer. This year, I'm running for the three-year term Town Clerk. Over the years, outside of the town office, some of you may recognize me from volunteering at the Guilford Fair of the Year, participating in cattle showing, and volunteering at Sugar on Snow Suppers in my younger years. I'm also a trustee of the Guilford Fair now. I've resigned. She's taken over, but I still do volunteer my time. She's a member of the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, as well as the Vermont Municipal Clerts and Treasurers Association, VMCTA. Through the VMCTA, she's attended workshops and completed many courses pertaining to her current role in the town office, which will support her anticipated future roles in the years. Guilford's her hometown. She's excited to have the opportunity to continue serving our wonderful community as Town Clerk. With your vote, I would be humble and grateful to serve. I would like to thank me, Penny, for sharing these words this evening on my behalf. I would also like to congratulate Penny, me, on retirement with her best in her exciting new chapter. Okay? So, yes, she happens to be on vacation.
Sean, for one second, I got ahead of myself. Is there anyone else here who's up for election who would like to speak? Ellie.
I'm going to make it quick. Oh, sorry. You know what? I'm going to come up front. I, too, have a lousy neck and don't want the rest of you to be bothered. I'm Ellie Mayenin, and I heard my name several times, so I just want to make sure that the face goes with the name, okay? The Gazette put in an article about who I am. Briefly, I've been in Guilford for just shy of 30 years. My kids grew up here. We've made our home down Maronic Road. And how can I keep it brief? I've done a lot of different things in Guilford. I've volunteered on many organizations. You've probably seen my face at many grain suppers, church suppers, Green Up Day. I was Green Up Coordinator for 20 years. So, I've been around quite a bit and have participated in communities. I've also participated in many nonprofit organizations in Guilford, but also elsewhere. I was on the board of the Reformer Christmas Stocking. I was one of the members of Wyndham Childcare Association a long time ago. And I helped found a community collaborative for Guilford a few years ago, which was focused on families, very young families, and we did a lot of great projects. And I'm actually really excited about seeing artwork up in here, because one of the things we did three years ago was we had an art day with preschoolers and their parents. We had all kinds of different artwork up in here, but it's wonderful to see it up again. Let's see. I've worked in the town office in a couple of different positions. I started off with Barbara Oles way back when, working on some grant reporting that had to do with the Community Service Learning Project. I was an auditor for a few years. I came in and worked as the, when there was a computer issue and a bunch of land records were lost, I came in and helped Penny with that project, and then became Assistant Town Clerk/Treasurer, which lasted until 2020, when I needed to look. All that work in the town office was part-time, and I decided that I needed to support my family a little bit more and look for full-time work. So, I ended up taking a position at Valley Cares in Townsend as their bookkeeper, which they didn't tell me is really their finance department. But, so I've had a number of different experiences as bookkeeper and doing finances. I'm also the treasurer for a family business in Connecticut. We own a tree farm, so I've been doing that for about 23 years, doing the books for that and working with, working with my seven brothers and one sister, and that's got to be worse than working with the Select Board, let me tell you. But, anyway, please do read what was written in the Gazette. If you have any questions, feel free to let me know. I think throughout my life, I've always tried to work on building community, and I hope that I'm going to continue to do that through practicing kindness and respect and civility. So, I would be honored to be your next treasurer.
Any other candidates?
I'm imagining you all naked with funny hats on right now, and it's not working. All dirt roads are muddy. Do any of you remember that? That's the sign that was blinking at the end of Guilford Center Road in 2019, and that's what made me fall in love with this town, because it's so, it just, "All dirt roads are muddy," you know? It just speaks to the heart. Anyway, moved here in 2019 as a part of the Remote Worker Grant through Vermont, the state of Vermont. From eastern Massachusetts, I grew up in upstate New York, and I went to the Rhode Island School of Design. And what else am I, oh, what don't I do? What are you running for? My name is Leslie Mallowan, and I am re-upping for a town auditor. I laid out the town report that you have in your hands, so what else? Cub Scouts, I'm the committee chair. I'm also the new member coordinator for the Calvin Coolidge District, friend of the Guilford Free Library. I'm also on the Christ Church Cemetery Association with Barry and a whole bunch of other people. It's such a great, great team there. And I just wanted to say, oh, yeah, besides the "All Dirt Roads are Muddy," I love that. I want to make the shirt. But I would be more than happy to, you know, continue on with the great layouts and also work with you. with the great layouts and also work with you. I see Tammy left, I think. But if you have questions, yes, do reach out. It might take us a little time, but we would be willing, you know, to look into things for you, so thank you very much.
Okay, Sean, I think you're up.
Thank you very much. My name is Sean Murphy. I live in West Guilford, and I've lived here since 1969, and this is a fantastic town. So I would like to, I'm gonna read what I have here. I would like to speak briefly about the Guilford Central School. I am a member of the WSESD Board, so that's a bigger scope than just our school up the road here. But in our town report, I'm gonna quote what John Gagnon said. "Adapting to current conditions, our multi-layered system of support remains in place with differentiated instruction and interventions to meet our students' academic and social behavioral needs," end of quote. "The residual challenges of COVID remain, but now Guilford Central School is refreshingly close to normal." Those last words are also John's. Guilford's proposed budget is $2,913,042, which represents a decrease of 1.5% for FY24. Now, I'd like to speak a little bit about the Wyndham Southeast School Board, of which I am a member and have been for quite a while. Our district is comprised of four towns, Rattleboro, Dumerson, Guilford, and Putney, with over 2,200 students and 400 staff members comprising nine school sites. With the assistance of the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds, ESER, the district has hired additional social workers, nurses, counselors, and other academic support staff to address the learning loss caused by the pandemic. There have been innovations in outdoor learning opportunities and significant upgrades to air handling systems throughout the district, to name a few of the ongoing projects. As Chair of the WSESD Finance Committee, I've witnessed the development of the FY24 budget. And that budget will be, let's see, I'll just go ahead. The proposed budget is $62,704,54, and it was passed unanimously by the WSESD Board on February 14th. That's a 2.7% increase from the previous year. The Wyndham Southeast School District Annual Meeting will take place on Tuesday, March 21st, at 7:00 in the gymnasium of the Rattleboro Union High School on Fairground Roads. So that's the time for all members of all four towns to come together, learn about the budget, and have discussions, and it'll be similar to a town meeting, but it's for all four towns. Any questions? I'd be happy to try to answer.
Thank you, Sean, as usual. And that concludes our show for this evening. Oh, Anne Ryder.
I think we should give a round of applause to Penny.
Yeah, Penny. Hey, 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 hey. We love you, Penny. Hey, Penny. Okay, people, if anyone wants to stay and help us clean up, that'd be great. Won't take long. And otherwise, thank you for coming. And those cookies, the refreshments there, if anyone's interested, there's decaf coffee.